And then Lori is gonna do her report after the student.
While the kids, she'll work her report in kinda while the kids are here and going in and out.
Okay. All right.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
I got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing not all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. District 741 is proud of the FFA, Future Farmers of America, at the state convention. Maggie Molitor, grade nine, third place Creed speaking. Angela Molitor, grade 11, fourth place Prepared Public Speaking. Eighth place Horse Judging. We have a team of Bailey Whaler, Asia.
Sankyo Fanoits.
Sankyo Fanoits. Yeah. Emily Porter and Brittany Demo. They're all grade 11th. Jesse Anderson, grade 9th, and Megan Loughlin, grade 9th for Taekwon Dole. And then they placed in the top 10 and they performed at the Talvin Show. Ashley Eisenbrowne, grade 12, received a third place Beef Entrepreneurship Efficiency Award. And then Ashley Eisenbrowne, grade 12, received her state degree. And can somebody explain to me what the state degree is?
That actually, it's actually coming today? No. Okay. The state degree is they have to take a project within, one second, from their freshman year all the way through their senior year, and they continue to develop that project. And hers was with cattle.
Okay.
It started as a small calf and then moving up to for a final, which would be judging and different cattle and that type of thing. So I can have her come in and talk about it.
Well, it's just interesting. I guess I've never heard of it. I'm not in that.
And they go through, it's like the business side of it, the actual raising of it, the finance part of it, of the whole project. So kinda like an Eagle Scout award.
Okay, but in for FFA.
But for FFA.
Oh, cool. Anybody here for public comment? Approve and correct the minutes from the April 25th, 2017, regular school board meeting. It's in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I got a motion from Bruce.
A second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing not all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Consent agenda. I'm gonna just read the two items underneath consent agenda and then we'll just adopt or approve them as the consent agenda all at once. So review and consider approval of the following athletic assignments for the 2017-18 school year. Head gymnastics coach Jessica Ingham. And then review and consider approval to accept the following donation. Three pickleball nets from Northern Paddle.
Yep. Northern Paddles is a pickleball organization in St. Cloud.
Oh, okay, cool. Well, thank them. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Who's that? Is that you?
Yeah, it's me.
Okay, all right. I got a motion from Mark and a second from Lou. Any other further discussions?
Jessica was the assistant. Do we have another assistant? It will be open now, okay.
Yep. Once she took the head coach, that opens up.
I was just hoping you had someone in mind already.
They'll go through the process.
Okay, okay.
All right. All in fingers, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. And carried. Business, so we're gonna wait for a few minutes.
They're supposed to come at 1:15 maybe.
Yeah, we can do the camera stuff. Business number two, if you maybe wanna step back.
Sure. Okay, so we're just gonna move to item two, which is Max is gonna present information concerning.
Yeah, I'll be using the board so you can see the camera stuff. To log out, I actually have to, I don't know how late the board meeting is gonna go, so I don't know about my informational report at the end, so there's just a couple things. I reported at the last board meeting in April, I guess, 'cause I wasn't at the first one. But just a couple updates. One of them, first one being is we got some portable AEDs that we've now stationed out, so we have one now in the press box at the softball field. There already was one in the baseball stadium when they put that up, and then in the press box for the track and the football. So those are accessible out there for outdoor activities. And that is just within the last week, we got those. So this is the DS Control Point is the program that runs the camera system. So you can see, I'm just gonna kinda show you a little bit about the system. If there's anything that you have questions about as we're going, I can explain that to you. All I really did right there is you can choose, I could put this many cameras on here at once if I wanted to do that, or anybody that has access to it. So I'm just gonna find a couple different types of cameras to show you. This would be when we refer to the analog cameras that were already in place with the old system. I can zoom in on these and I'm just using the scroll thing. So this is analog, so that's why it's not very clear when I do that. Within that, you can take still pictures. So if there was something going on here, I could just stop this or take a still picture of it. You can record video. You can go back quickly, or you can go back and search specific times. So like if I click right here, I could just go back within a time period right here if there's something happened shortly. If there was, somebody came in and said, "Hey, something happened in this hallway last week Tuesday", I could just go right here, do a search, and put in whatever camera I wanted to, and put in the data, and it would pull it up during that window. So I'm not gonna spend a lot of time looking at that, but just so you know that that's kinda how the system operated, is way different than the old system that we were on.
How far back have you been?
Actually, about two weeks.
Yeah, with the older one, we could go back about three days. There isn't yet to be an incident that we haven't been able to go back and pull, so I've never went back to see when the last date, when it just starts rerecording over the DVR. But the one thing that we can do here, and it's basically, if I understand correctly, it was like $100 maybe for a terabyte of memory.
We can expand.
And all it is is a hard drive to put video on. And so you can just put them into the, so you can just get the things right off Amazon and pop them right in there, and so you can just go back and record. And the reason, see that you need some of those, I'll find a camera that's a 360. So what's going on right here, this is a 360-degree camera, and you can see the image is a lot clearer, but this is recording an awful lot of data because it's recording all of this stuff. And what we can do with it is manipulate this camera. We can zoom in and then pull up and move around and go down. So earlier, you couldn't really see the door. So even though right now, we're looking at the camera like this, all of that data that's being recorded is being stored. And what happens is, it's like, I don't know the technological term for it, but the still images are just burned in there, so the camera just senses any change in motion. So it's not recording this door and storing that door image 24/7. It's only gonna record and store the changes in the images. But so that's a kind of a snapshot. You can see all the different cameras. That's how the systems work, and you can move around. So there's two, you know, two different types of cameras. There's the digital and there's the analog. Then there's the 360, which is this camera that I was showing you, or the ones that were in the high school art room is where we were. That's just a straight camera, just taking a straight shot. The one quick, I'll show you, and then I'll just give you a quick tour, and then you can watch. These are the ones in the gym. So they're 360 cameras. And else, turn this for you, so you don't get a headache. But there's one on each side of the gym. So they're mounted to the wall, which is why that 360 camera looks like it's sideways, but it's the same concept as one up on the ceiling, on the wall. And so same thing, we can zoom in across, and right here, I think, is where the other camera is on the other side. So that's.
And those aren't using, we had not had that coverage.
No coverage in the gymnasiums prior, and so that's in the middle school and in the high school gym. Hopefully, this works. I don't log into this computer a lot, and sometimes when you're bringing it from one device into the other, there's be issues. But you can create tours in here, so I created a couple of them to show you. This is just, we're just going through. So you can see, those are the 360 cameras on each end of the cafeteria, and then the stairway going down in the high school art room. So I just created this tour, and it's gonna go, I think, 20 or 30 seconds or something like that, and switch. But you can create this, so if I wanna have this up and just see what's going on during the lunchroom times, this is basically the areas where kids could be, so you could have that up and do that. I think on this particular tour that I created, I just put these eight cameras on here just to show you. And then I made one more for you to see. Let's stop this one, just for a presentation here. And this should kind of go through pretty much the whole school. So this is door four, where you'd come in right here, the high school, and then turn right down here to go to the high school office. This one would be actually right out here. And this one is, as you come past the office, the door to go out to the parking lot, continuing down the hall. You can see they're labeled. So this would Mr. Fox's hall. This is the hallway right behind here. This is right over here in the science wing. This is right down here. The computer lab is right there, and then this is facing towards the middle school parking lot from the science hall. And this is just all live stuff. I just threw this in there so you could see, there's different, you can put whatever kind of configuration you want. Yet, another thing that we did not have in the past, we actually have, and I thought, when I put this on here, I thought it was the computer lab, but I missed the word hall. We have all of the computer labs' cameras inside of them too. That was a request from our technology department. This one you already saw, but this goes down towards the auditorium. These doors are locked now for the safety of our kids. This one goes down to the auditorium from the other side, the high school art room, right down there.
And one of the reasons I was putting a few additional cameras in, we had a little bit of door finder plan, is that you can see it's quite a ways down for some of the shots on the cameras. So it's to clean those pieces up.
So this is the door one, which would be to come into the auditorium fitness center. This is over by the cardio studio right here. This is door two, or three, maybe, inside the fitness center, has a 360-degree camera. And then, and you can't, these can be manipulated while they're going through the tour if you want to, these 360-degree ones. This is the cardio studio within the fitness center, and then this is the one which would be down the hallway towards the auditorium. So again, some of the cafeteria stuff that we already saw.
So the 360s turn on if there's movement?
Well, all of them, all of them do that same thing, yep. They're just recording.
As soon as there's movement, so like if we're taking during the release between classes, then this thing is recording 360 all the way around, virtually everything that's going on, active and recorded.
It's recording all the time, but the image that it writes to the hard drive is only the change. If that makes, because this window is gonna be there all day long, so it would just take all the memory. Right, exactly. I'll show you, maybe, I'll pull up our search so you can see, that maybe answer your question better. But this, we're getting close to the end. You're just kinda seeing a tour of the camera coverage, this stuff. This is door seven, I think, going out to the middle school buses, and this would be your courtyard right there by the middle school library. Here's the custodial office and the band room door. This goes back down that way, the middle school boys locker room, middle school girls locker room. There's a bet, there's a camera right there as well. This one is headed back down towards the community, and there goes out the band room doors. And we're back to the beginning of where we were. Okay, so you asked a question about the recording. So what happens, if I do a search, we'll just do one camera, and I wanna look at high school door four, which is a 360-degree camera. You see all this blue? That's movement. So if something happens in the middle of the night and nobody's in the building, I don't wanna spend 10 hours trying, you know, 'cause otherwise theoretically, you have to watch a 10-hour window to see what's going on. And that's why it's, this is way better for me than the old system, because if somebody came in and said, "Hey, something happened", and they gave me a four-day period of time, they don't know when it happened, that's 96 hours of me sitting down watching a video, and the moment you look away, something else. I mean, it's, it still takes a lot of time to review all of this stuff, but it makes it a whole lot easier. So I can take this, you know, snapshot, and I can pick that window of time, or I can do this, and it's saying no video, 'cause there's no change at the beginning. But if I move it there, it should go away, and you see that. No video doesn't mean that it didn't record, it just means that there's no change in it. So I don't know if there's any other questions, but in a snapshot, that's our system. And maybe in hindsight, it would've been great for you to see what we had beforehand, but I don't know how, it probably wouldn't have.
How many cameras are there total?
24, I believe.
How many are analog?
You're asking the wrong guy. I don't know, we could pull them up, and I could tell you exactly.
On an analog, is it pretty hard to search or pretty hard to see?
Yeah. We'll be replacing the analogs as we need to, and if one of them isn't doing what we need to do, then we'll replace them. We have limited dollars, so we replaced the main things that we wanted to get done, but again, as mentioned, we know that we need to replace some of the analog cameras.
So I think you're looking at the difference between an analog. I don't know for sure if it's the lighting, if this one is still an analog or not, but the reality of it is, is you get fantastic coverage here regardless. You're not, you're not gonna have to zoom in much in this stairway as opposed to a hallway. So there you can see somebody going down to the locker.
I would say within a couple years, all the analogs will be gone.
And we did wire everything for.
For the new system.
So we did the wiring, so the wiring is done. So if one does die.
They'll go immediately to the newer cameras.
Are all the students well aware that everything is speed?
Pretty much.
That's a good question. Hope so. I don't know.
Yeah. I know, like, well, Max has had it up and on in his office showing, as well as mine. And we'll have kids come in, "Can you help me find this, or this happened sometimes?" They'll took down their phone one, and they don't know where it is. So they'll come down, and "Can you tell me where I left my phone?"
We do charge them for that.
We charge their parents when they pay their taxes.
But it is, them knowing the cameras are there is probably one of the biggest preventives of the behavior discipline part. And it also solves a lot of questions. Instead of, you know, he said, she said, you can pull it up and say, "Okay, here's the picture, tell me what happened." So that conversation really changes, and you lose a lot of the defensive part, and rather, you work on solving the problem between the relationships.
Well, luckily, the issue grows quick when they realize that, when they come to something. You can say, "Well, this is really what happened."
Right, so.
Any other questions? That's the camera system.
At one time, we had a few dead zones that weren't covered, and you pretty much addressed that issue. I know you were looking at it.
With the new cameras, we'll purchase at least half of this coming year to get rid of that, the other half for the next year.
We did, still not knowing exactly how much of the 360 cameras would cover, going out, we didn't wanna overdo it to start, so we did still have some dead zones. But we did now come up with a plan for that, and there's money in the five-year plan.
Yeah, there's money in the five-year plan. We'll get half from, like I said, this year at the very least, and then the other half for the next year.
And then it'll recover.
Then we'll have all the coverage, I mean. Then we'll probably start working more a little bit at our elementary school.
Do we have?
We do have cameras, but it's the old system, so.
Like the analog.
But Dave doesn't need the cameras quite as much as we need to do at our secondary school.
Can we turn the lights on?
Thank you.
Good question for our principal advisory students. What do you guys think? As students, do you know the cameras are out there?
I think we know it. Everyone's walking down the halls, and I'm not thinking about it.
Go over here.
Well, I definitely wanted to look back at the one going down to the locker room, 'cause I've fallen down those stairs before, and I think it'd be funny to watch.
You know, you can come see that.
Tutorial. We're gonna move on to one underneath business, which is receive reports from the middle and high school advisory council. You guys are up.
Let somebody take the lead, and you wanna introduce yourselves maybe first? And then you can just go ahead and start the discussion. Or introduce yourselves as you chat.
I'll start. Do you guys have this paper or not?
No, they do not.
No. You want it?
Sure.
I mean, there's a lot right here. Okay. So if you look in the second thing on that, one of my things is I'm doing a technology internship with Mr. Grace and Jonah and Mr. Decker. And we've really seen this year, and especially this spring, teachers utilizing Chromebooks and technology in the classroom more. I think, besides my calc class, which, I mean, it's hard to use a computer for calc, but I've used Chromebook in every single one of my classes, and usually almost every day, especially for honors English and HBS. And so we had just talked about it, and that teachers have been utilizing it more, and we really wanna see next year them using Google Classroom, Google Forms, Google Docs. I don't know how familiar you are with all that. But that's, I mean, obviously, that's where our future is heading. In my college class, it's 100% online and everything else, so it'll be neat to see students more prepared for that, and definitely have more teacher training for, to be able to utilize technology efficiently.
Yeah, I totally agree with the one-to-one initiative with going to Chromebooks. So 10th grade, we had to write our research paper. And I chose to wrote my argumentative paper. I chose to write mine on paper use and how we don't recycle, and how technology is updating so fast that it's just so much easier to go that way. And I ended up printing off upwards of 20 sheets of paper for this, which totally contradicted my whole paper. But I, after researching and writing this paper, I've totally like, it's like enlightened me on the fact of how much we actually waste so much paper, and how we have all this technology, we just don't utilize it yet. And I think going one-to-one will be really great, 'cause we've already started doing it a little bit in my math class, which is nice, because I, he can write the notes, Mr. Heimerman can write the notes on the smartboard, and I can get them right on my Chromebook when we have them, and I can print them out if I need. Otherwise, they're right there on my computer. But just in all my classes too, like PBS, that's all online, which is really nice. So that's been a fun way to get into it too.
So, just since you brought up Mr. Heimerman, have you been in there since he has been using the new smartboard?
Yeah.
Could you talk a little bit about the difference in that? Because that's something they're looking at possibly spending $15 on?
Yeah, for sure. So the new smartboard, he can, I like how you can move it around the room too. It's on wheels, which is nice. He can write something, and if I have my Chromebook on his page, whatever he writes, or where he zooms in, or where, whatever he does, it'll pop up on my Chromebook too, so especially if I can't see, 'cause I sit in the back of the classroom. If I can't see, it's right on my Chromebook. He, I don't know, he seems to really like it, just because there's more features, it seems like, than the smartboard. You can write with different width of the pen style, and there's just like, I don't know, new things with that. But I think it'd be a step in the right direction.
The fact that it shows up as he's doing it, not always upright on your desk, versus, you know, before, the smartboard, he saved it to a file, and the student could go back in time and pull that file down after he's completed it. So as they're working in class, it's right there, as well as up there. So it is one of the, it's like bad things, but like on stage. It is something of math, the person is looking at.
It's really, really cool. Yep, there's different features in how you can write, like even today. Even today, there was students, we're done with stats, we finished the entire book, so we're not actually utilizing the smartboard in the class. But they were just kinda like messing around with it and looking at its features today. And like, on that thing, two people can't write at the same time. But in his, like, two people can write, and there's different features in how you can even erase. I mean, even just the basics of it are so much cooler than that. And it's, I mean, it's obviously the same thing, it's still a smartboard, but the technology on it is way more advanced, is really cool.
And it is their curriculum year cycle, so they are looking at, instead of looking at getting books, having their books either re-covered or rebound. So they're in good shape again, but re-utilizing it, 'cause they like the series, and spending the majority of the dollars on getting these newer smartboards. So, and we have one on demo right now from DVD, is, they're letting us borrow one.
What is the cost difference? Are they getting cheaper, or is it about the same?
This one is, I think, more expensive. I think it's $4,000, I'm not 100% sure. And we have, you know, four chapters, so it would be the bulk of our curriculum development to do that. And then there is a license that would have to be purchased with it, so we have to look at that for six years, 'cause that would be their next cycle.
And another thing with that too, is that some teachers, like math teachers, actually utilize their smartboard. Like, they do stuff on it and everything. But like, when we go to other classes, like when I go to my human body systems class, that's all on the computer, and the only part that's utilized from it is really like the projector portion of it, not like the smartboard technology and the whatever, which isn't a bad thing, because it's still a really like technology advanced class. But there's some curriculums that, you know, actually utilize it, and then some that don't, so it's not necessarily necessary for everybody to get one.
One of the things that we're looking at is moving where appropriate away from smartboards to just TV screens, big TV screens, it's cheaper. And then they can project from the Chromebooks to the screens. So there'll be a lot of changes that are made, but I think, you know, we need to decide. It doesn't do us any good to put one of the Chrome, or the smartboards that the students are talking about in a classroom, if all it's going to be is a screen. We wanna get the technology to the people who are gonna use it the most.
Also, the use of the courtyard has been a huge upgrade for us. During lunch, almost like all of the people at lunch go out and use the courtyard to eat, or just like lay in the sun. It's really nice to just get out of the school and get some fresh air and get in the sun.
With, touching on that courtyard thing, we only have one picnic table out there right now, and there's about 30 kids out there with one picnic table, so we're really finding some interesting ways to eat our lunch out there right now. So maybe getting some more picnic tables out there would for sure be helpful. But then, also put away some side that we can just have some, play some games and just hang out. We're in the grass too. So not all picnic tables, but definitely need some more if we're gonna keep using that courtyard.
We had hamburger testing. The school had some new hamburgers that we have, and I guess they're for fun on the Sunday, and they were really good burgers, I thought. They're juicier than the original burgers that we get for lunch. So I thought they were really good, and I don't know, I think that would be nice to have those every time we have hamburgers.
There's an a la carte after lunch and after schools, and it's pretty much just like a snack bar. And it's open for like, if sports are leaving to go somewhere, it'll open up at the end of the school day, so you can buy. Um, and it's open for like if sports are leaving to go somewhere, it'll open up at the end of the school day, so you can buy something to get you through, I guess.
And you, students have liked that?
Yeah, we like it a lot.
And it was a change in some of our duty hours for our staff that we have somebody here now until that three o'clock time, so we can do that a la carte for kids that are going off to school, et cetera. So that was a new thing this year.
Uh, I'm gonna talk about the new media area or the revamped media area. Um, I would really like to see the small rooms to where you can just go within a couple people in the same class and then you can work together. Like with like a whiteboard or a computer or charging stations in there, so you can get your work done.
Go back to the section. Can you guys just choose a topic or?
Um, I also really like the a la carte lines because being somebody who can't drive, I have to go with my parents, so we don't get to stop anywhere before games or anything. So then being able to just get something a little before the game, it can get you through.
Um, okay, I think the school climate all around this year has been pretty good. Um, like, I don't feel there's as many problems as there has been like in past years. So I think that's good and the school year has gone really, really fast.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to the media center. I think it'd be really good to have like the charging stations and everything, especially if we are gonna go one-to-one. Because then like everybody has a place that they can charge their Chromebooks if they don't have stuff like that at home and such.
Questions the boards may have or other comments from our principal advisory?
I have a question for you. One of the things that we're looking at is that, as you know, we're going to go to a one-to-one next year. But one of the things that we're waiting for are the new costs of the newest Chromebooks that are coming out with the touchscreens on them. Now, there's, I, I worry about even asking this question because there's a tendency for any, anytime you bring up a new thing, people want it. But do you see it as an advantage for students to have that? Um, certainly, we're looking at it probably for our staff to be able to use that, but the question will be is whether we wanna spend extra money for the touchscreens for our students.
Um, I personally, like, I think it'd be fun, but it's not a necessity, yeah, to me.
Yeah, if that's the only upgrade above the other one, it's the, I definitely prefer typing over touchscreen. It's not worth more money on the touchscreens.
Yeah, I really don't think it would be a very good option to take, but like the only thing that would be useful for is, would be math and uh, some seniors don't even take a math class, so.
Okay, so I um, I'm at the elementary school for uh, close to like two hours a day, um, in three different classrooms to translate and we use iPads and Chromebooks, uh, collectively, both of them. And um, with the students, we also had a, a technology team kinda thing come and interview some students. Um, and I was in charge of that, like facilitating it and we actually did ask the students that, like, do you prefer iPads or Chromebooks or what do you say? And even the elementary schoolers, a lot of them were, I don't like the iPads because I click something and it's wrong and you know, I think, I don't think touchscreen is as great as you may seem. I think that, I mean, phone touchscreen is great, but uh, for computers, I think it's good to have it. You have the touchpad on the bottom and I think you can be coordinated enough to do that.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any questions for the other question?
Yeah, where do the hamburgers come from?
Well, background on those is we had to buy a new oven this year because ours pumped out surprisingly.
One oven. We replaced it with two though.
We did replace it with two and so happens Lori went to a training and the new oven has a griller on it. So instead of just cooking the hamburgers, you can get fresh uncooked hamburger, you know, frozen and actually grill it like you're grilling outside. So I had my guinea pigs come down because we usually have seniors come in with grills on Fun in the Sun and say, hey, you wanna try this? And they're like, sure, and it might be an option for next year because they, it took about as long to do those as it did the pre-cooked hamburgers. Now granted, there was a little more meat to these because they would be the Fun in the Sunny ones, but it didn't take them any longer than it did the pre-cooked ones. So it may be something you'll see, maybe a little smaller hamburger next year, but for Fun in the Sun, we'll do a nice juicy one, so.
Good.
It was fun to do the taste test, though. We, we were able to get rid of all twenty-four hamburgers like that. And overall, I think the thing I got from the students was uh, lunches overall have been really good. They like the open vegetables. There's some you like, there's some you don't. Still a lot of chicken, but that kinda goes with, we do serve more chicken than we do any of the other meats. Other questions?
Are there any vegetarians here? Are there any in the school?
We do have a few.
I'm just curious how they feel about lunch.
We, we do have a few.
There's a big salad bar, actually.
Every day.
When you get to the end of the lunch line, there's always, every day, there's a salad bar.
And, and we either have eggs or tofu on there and yogurt. We always have yogurt and granola available as options. And if there are any specific diets, we do accommodate those as well. Well, thank you guys. I appreciate your input as always. And I think next, no, there was one, may I have you guys wait till we have our German students and teacher, Mr. Wilkie, come down and talk a little bit about our German trip that happened this year.
This is our first time both doing this, so we're both probably nervous, so. Alright, so it's a little bit of a rough draft of our kinda path. It's a little bit hard to see. The dotted lines are the airplane flight pretty much. So we went to Paris, stayed there for two days, then we went to Switzerland and how many days did we stay there now?
We were there for two.
Two as well. And then we went through Lichtenstein. You can't really see it, but it's there. And then we went to Austria and then we went to Germany.
Did you fly between spots?
Uh, we took a bus most of the way, or pretty much all the way, and then we had a airplane from Germany and we went to the Netherlands and a connecting flight and then we went to America.
Yeah, but from Paris to Berne, we took a what?
A train.
Train, yeah.
Yeah. I'll explain it in a brief.
About two hours.
Yeah. So we went on a walking tour as our first thing and all of us are extremely tired from the eight-hour plane ride probably, so. Can you click? Nope.
Sorry.
So this is just some of the pictures of what we saw on our walking tour, so you can just click through these.
This is one of the gardens that we passed by in our walking tour. So after eight hours of flying, we took a nice, long walking tour of Paris. We weren't tired enough already, right? So.
We walked about like twenty miles, I would say.
Yeah, that first day, we put on almost fifteen thousand steps, I think, that day.
Yeah. And this is like thirty-six hours of being awake too, so.
Right, yeah, we were awake though. Yeah, and so we get, we leave here, which was like midnight their time. We arrive at eight in the morning. And then we got, we got rolling and we didn't get to bed that night until, until eight o'clock, eight, eight-thirty.
Yeah, we got to the hotel and then we probably stayed up till ten for somewhere. For some of us.
And so we walked from probably eight in the morning until three or four in the afternoon.
Yep.
Straight, so.
And then three of the rooms lost their power at the first hotel.
Yeah, yeah.
Somehow we blew the circuit.
Mixed it?
Yeah. This is just one of the, what is the river in Paris again?
The Seine.
The Seine.
In, in Paris.
Mm-hmm. So you can click. Uh, here's Notre Dame. It's Our Lady, so not saying any bad words here, people.
Which is based off of the hunchback of Notre Dame. They based it off of this castle.
It's kind of history.
Church, sorry.
Yeah. So this first picture is actually only the picture, is it the back or the side? I think it was the back.
This is the back of the church here.
Yeah, and then the middle one is of the front.
Correct. And then this one's the side here.
Yeah.
And this rose window is probably about, that's about forty-five to sixty feet in diameter, so just to give you an idea how big that is.
They didn't do, or they did it all by hand too, didn't they?
It's all hand sta, hand, it's stained glass windows on those rose windows. And the inside photos of that, I don't know if she's got any, but some of those.
I didn't go inside.
They are extremely interesting and really ornate.
Half of the Painesville group went in and half of them stayed out.
Keep going.
Mm-hmm. Alright, um, in this first picture, um, in a lot of countries, they kinda have this like one location where couples would put a lock and saying my, and like saying our love together is sealed for this lock and they're like throw away the key. And actually on this bridge, it, the entire fencing was, had so many locks, it actually became unstable, so they had to move the fencing. And they changed it, so then it's very thick and they have a glass pane there, but as you can see, some people still kinda can sneak locks in there.
Right, yeah, they redid the railing to try to deter that from happening. But the one that they have, the, where they replaced it, that fence is probably what, forty-five feet long and about eight feet tall and it's straight locks.
They moved it down the street to like the next bridge.
And this is also over the Seine, so we're, this is kind of the old part of Paris and in the interior part, it's an island and so the Seine goes around the island and there's three parts to it.
There's some old buildings I took pictures of.
Well, this still looks like Notre Dame or part of it here.
Yeah, it might have been.
And this one, harder to say.
Yeah, there's so much stuff, you cannot memorize everything. Okay, you can click. Then as everybody would kinda assume, we went to the Eiffel Tower and by the Eiffel Tower is the Wall of Peace. It's a glass, it's glass, right? If you like, yeah, and it has peace written in every single language on it.
And it's at the end of, so there's like a causeway between the Eiffel Tower and this monument. So if you think of, if you've gone to Washington DC, they have that big walkway area. This is very similar to that. Um, and on the opposite side like this, if you're facing towards it, you're looking towards the Eiffel Tower, so the whole field that goes along, you know, and then the back is their military training facility. Where they used to train their artillery, et cetera. It's kinda interesting. That, they don't have a picture of it, but that's kinda where we're at there in Paris.
You can click.
I don't.
Yep. So this is the second story of the Eiffel Tower. I couldn't make it to the third story. I was, I got on my fear of heights about halfway through the trip, but I was so scared here.
And I, and after going on the other one, I'm surprised that, I mean, I think if you would have gone back here after that.
Oh yeah, I would have probably gone to the third if we went back.
But this is the view from, from that second tier.
That's about a thousand feet up, I think it was?
Right here? No.
No, no, or was that the highest point?
This one's, the height is three hundred or four hundred feet, so you're probably about sixty to eighty feet here.
Yeah.
When you were up there, you could see the whole city around you. It was really cool.
Yeah, some in the group went all the way to the top.
There's no sk, there's no skyscrapers in that city because of, they couldn't have skyscrapers in that city limits and you can see in the background the skyscrapers, that's outside of the city limits.
Right, and what she's talking about, the city of Paris passed an ordinance not to add skyscrap, there's like one skyscraper in the interior of Paris. And I think the year after that was built, they put a moratorium on any future ones because they didn't wanna ruin the view of, of the interior of Paris.
Yeah, if you kinda look in the picture, if you look on the right there, there's just that one lone skyscraper. It's kinda, it's kinda like that.
Yeah, by itself.
It's just there, like, it's like, why is that there, so.
And the rest of the buildings, I think, have a maximum of six or seven stories.
Yeah, and they're all really old buildings too.
I don't.
Yep. This is directly underneath the Eiffel Tower. That like just kinda looked cool.
Ground looking up, yep.
Yeah. And here's the Ferris wheel.
Yep, this is at the end of the Champs-Elysees, which is the main shopping district of Paris. Um, so they've got a, a Ferris wheel and, and some amusement attractions on the one part. Then you have the Art de Triomphe, which is uh, it's military status for military victories, is what it was erected for. And this is also part of the Champs-Elysees, which is the most expensive shopping area in France, so.
Did you guys buy anything there?
No.
The guys and I went into, they had a Peugeot showroom, which we don't have a lot of Peugeots here in the US, but, so we went into there and they had an interactive car. So we were doing stuff and the car would mess with it.
Also.
So it's kinda neat, so. And we went to a restaurant and stuff. We didn't do a lot of, as a group, I don't think we did a lot of shopping on that part.
You can click.
Yeah.
Alright, I don't remember the names of these buildings.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out right now. This looks like the side of the, maybe the Louvre, a part of it. But the Louvre is a large building, so I'm trying to get an idea of what this one is. That one, I can't, I couldn't tell you on that one.
Yeah, what was the next one?
Here, but here, this one's got the view of the Eiffel Tower at night and this is just one of the churches that are in Paris.
Yeah, okay, you can go. Um, after Paris, we went to Switzerland, one of the fastest trains in Europe and so you can kinda see our view.
We went over a hundred miles per hour.
Oh, faster than that?
Yeah, way faster.
We clocked it at two-twenty.
Yep.
Yeah, so we were moving.
So none of us were really aware of that because I'm fairly certain within ten minutes, we all fell asleep.
Well, the plane.
We were moving quite a bit.
We were.
So then at the end of the train ride, we arrived into Berne and Berne is the capital of Switzerland. And they have a lot of, very scenic city. They have a lot of clocks. You're gonna see a few of these, I think, here and, and sundial clocks, things like that, so. Um, so this is all old city in, in Berne. You got anything to add? We're good? Okay.
At a lot of the corners and fountains, they had a statue and a lot of them are very random. For example, that first one is actually just a man eating a bag of babies. And then another guy, he's.
Each of them tell a story. Each of them have history behind it.
Yeah, and so then there's, the next guy's wrestling like a tiger maybe or, or lion and scuba diver.
Yeah, and what you're seeing here, these are the pillars of the fountains, so they have a lot of fountains in Berne. So at the bottom of the pillars is generally some type of fountain of some sort. Um, and they do have a lot of different, as you can see. It doesn't seem like there's any rhyme or reason other than, you know, depending on what part of the history they were dealing with and what they decided to put up a fountain and that's it.
There should be two more on the next slide.
Yep.
And then, yeah, in the middle is actually.
Yeah, I know. This one I know.
Um, that one is the, supposed to represent liberty. She has a blindfold saying she won't judge you on your looks and she's holding a scale like to balance what's right and what's wrong. And in the middle is actually a picture of Berne's bear.
He's right here.
Very, we were very far away.
Yeah, so we're taking that from a bridge over that river. Um, yeah, and then this is a statue here. This is of Wilhelm Tell, which is the hero. And representing the, the founding of, of Switzerland, so. And we read a little bit about that in German three here.
Yep. Try it, click.
So here's some views of.
The Swiss mountains.
Yeah, this is the first time we were able to see him and over there is one of the big lakes. I don't ask me to say their name.
There's a bunch of lakes around them.
What was the really big lake?
Viertstadt Wäldersee?
I think this was like the part of it.
Yeah, okay, so this is part of the Viertstadt Wäldersee and vier is for Stadt, city. Vier Städte Wald Wälder See, forests, lake, so four. And this is also the area where Switzerland, where it kinda was founded as well. And it's all based upon this, a lake and there's four counties or cantons that are part of that lake. So, and they form the basis of that Spanish government. So we have thirteen or fourteen cantons, I think, overall.
Thirteen, I think it is now.
Thirteen.
I think you're right.
Alright, you can go next. And here's just another view of the sun setting a little bit there.
From inside of our bus.
Yeah, we had one bus in France and then we had the next bus the entire trip, so here's more views.
We spent a lot of time in that bus.
We slept on the bus the whole time.
Yeah, and this was around Switzerland.
Yeah, so this is actually the view of our hotel.
You could walk right outside and you walk around the corner and this is exactly what you see because we, we're on top of a hill up in the mountains and we just, yeah.
Yeah, we had spectacular view from there.
We did.
You did, I got a view of the parking lots.
This is part of the hotel here, a little bit, yeah, you had the rock side.
Like whenever we ate breakfast, we got to look out the window and look out, out at all the mountains and stuff.
Yeah, alright, so you wanna go next?
Yeah, and I've got a video on the Painesville School's webpage. It's of this lake from that part and it just does a, a survey of that, so if you wanna see that. It's of this lake from that part, and it just does a, a survey of that, so, if you wanna see that at some point, you can.
You wanna tell about this story?
Do you know it, or you wanna, I can do it.
I can remember part of it, but not all of it.
So, um, I know a lot of people don't think of, of Switzerland as being a fighting country, but they, they have, uh, what are called legionnaires, which are mercenaries. So they have sent over the years, a number of mercenaries to a lot of other countries to help protect people. Um, a good example today of where they have, uh, their troops is for the Pope in Rome. Uh, that is, is their guard, he is, that is the guard that guards him. Um, and so these are elite troops, and this particular monument, it's made of, it's basically, it's a, it's a, on a rock face.
It's on stone.
By a, by a pond, and it represents, um, when Louis XIV was overthrown in Paris. Uh, when the, when you had the, uh, French Revolution take place. Um, a lot of the legionnaires that were guarding him, cause the King's Guard at that time was, the legionnaires from, from, from Switzerland, a lot of them died. And so this is a monument to those that were protecting them, and they have been noted to fight to the death. You know, for certain causes, so.
A little continuation of that is.
Did you have something to say?
Uh, yeah, um, Louis XVI was the one that was overthrown with the French Revolution.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two of them, that's good.
Alright, this is the.
You can tell I'm not a hair, history person.
This, uh, most of this bridge was actually burned down, and in the middle, like, when you walk in the bridge, they actually have little sign. Well, there's a beam of wood that like depicts how it was built, and about like, only eight of them survived, when there is, how, probably a hundred, maybe?
About a hundred and forty.
Yeah, and so like, the entire middle of the bridge was burned down, and then like, so if you kinda look, every single little wooden pier that goes out, there's, uh, plaques signifying like how this place was built and stuff. And we only have about eight left of them.
This whole bridge is made out of wood.
Yeah.
And it's one of the major landmarks in Switzerland, in Lissabon.
I feel bad for a lot of people, we looked down in the river and we found like three smartphones. And now we're on Mount Pilatus. So, it was very cloudy, so we weren't able to really see down there, but even if it was cloudy, it was still really pretty. So if you wanna go over one more?
So on the other end of the ledge is basically, you could walk on clouds. It's a long drop if you try to.
Here's a little bit of a better view, a lot of the stuff was still closed, cause of the snow. But, uh, from what we were, we were able to go to one part out of like five, I think. And.
Yeah, yeah, there's still a lot, like this section here is all closed. And then there's a section that goes to the farther this way.
And then there's a section in some caves and stuff.
Yeah, that was close to it.
And Mount Pilatus is actually kinda famous, cause it has a lot of dragon legends to it, so it's actually like, its picture that represents it is a dragon. So. Oh, here's our way down, I took some pictures there. So how many, so we took a gondola, or, well, we took a ski lift, and then we went on a gondola. And this is where I got over my fear of heights, so.
Yeah, cause she sat on the floor, which has got an open floor plan. And that one, that one last piece, if you go here, the gondola kinda comes into here. So it kinda comes, if you see the arrow that I'm pointing here, there's a gondola that comes up in there, and that gap is about five hundred foot drop. So, between those two.
It's kinda spooky, cause we'd see everything and then our view would go to zero, cause we're in the cloud.
If you think the Grand Canyon is big, this is bigger.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Um, here's a waterfall, and we went through Liechtenstein, and that's the castle of the Prince of Liechtenstein, I believe it was?
Yep. Yeah, that's right up there.
Yeah.
That's here again. Still lived in today.
Alright, and then, everybody's favorite, we went through some snow.
Yeah, we, we thought we were in the snow in Switzerland, there wasn't, it was actually fairly green. When we entered Austria, we entered into some higher points, and then we got into some, they were actually still skiing in parts.
Yeah, we went in a lot of mountains, yeah. So you can go next. Alright, um, I can never, I can remember, Neuschwanstein Castle, what was the other one's name?
This one is Hoenschwango. So Hoenschwango is where King Ludwig grew up. And, so this is his parents' castle, and this is on one hill, and on the opposite hill is where Neuschwanstein Castle is at. Which is the castle that Disney took their, their, their rendition of, the Disney castle, comes from this particular one.
Like in the beginning of Walt Disney's films, how the castle comes up with a little star over it, that's the castle that it's based off of.
Okay, so here's a little scale model, we weren't allowed to take pictures inside the Neuschwanstein Castle, and.
But you did it anyway.
They were trying to sell.
Well, you weren't allowed to take it during the tour.
Oh yeah, the tour, yeah, this is outside the tour.
Yeah, this is outside of the tour, so.
This was in a little, like, back area towards the gift shop?
I didn't break any laws.
Here.
Yeah, and we actually had to walk up and down the hill, and that was about twenty minutes up and down. I went on, I took my time going down, it's cause it, there's a lot of beautiful nature, as you can kinda see there.
They also had carriages with horses, and you could take a horse carriage up and down the hills, and I was able to take one down the hill, and it cut your time off, quite a bit.
Man, you weren't that tired. Uh, what was this guy, what was this called again?
This is the, the Marienplatz in, in München.
If you wanna go next, it's a better picture.
Is it a better picture next one?
Oh no, maybe not go back. I thought it was.
Yeah, I think it was a, so here they have a Glockenspiel, which is a, a mechanism that's a clock, so, it's got, it's got moving pieces to it, and it, it's a rendition of the wedding of, um, I think who the king is that, I wonder if that's Ludwig or not? But it's one of the kings of Munich at that time. And the basis of Oktoberfest forming kinda has that little story in that clock, how it formed.
I had some videos on it, but I could not get the videos to work on this.
Plays a song like every couple hours, right?
It was like.
For like five minutes.
Yeah.
And the figures on there are actually like life size, so when you look up, you can actually see them. It's really cool.
There is three different parts to it, usually only two play, the third part's very iffy. Um, the first part is kind of people going around in a circle, and then two knights will joust, and one will get knocked off, actually. The second part is of dancers, in a sense, and then the third part that happens sometimes is actually a golden chicken. We sadly did not get the golden chicken to go.
And so this is also the government building, the Rathaus, or City Hall, in, in Munich. So, and it's the starting point of the major walkway, of the shopping area, and stuff like that.
Alright, you can go. Uh, we went to a concentration camp in Dachau. And, um, this is the door to go in, and it says, "Arbeit macht frei", which I kinda thought was a little sad, cause it literally translates to, "Work will make you free." But, didn't really make them free. So you can go.
Going to an actual concentration camp changes, like, your views on how it was back then, and like with a bunch of the changes that they had to make today.
Dachau was actually one of the first ones to open, and one of the longest running ones. So this is a picture of the barracks that were there, so we wanna continue one more? Um, this is a sign, and it has in four different languages, the second one is English. "May the example of those who were exterminated here between nineteen thirty-three and nineteen forty-five, because they resisted Nazism and helped to unite the living for the defense of peace and freedom and a respect for their fellow men." And then this is just a sign in five different languages saying, "Never again." This is a little monument for, and it has all the ashes of the people that were unknown. The crematorium. This one's pretty easy to translate.
Yeah, this part's the crematorium, this is part of.
Like the gas chamber?
Yeah, part of the gas chambers here.
They actually, they didn't have a gas chamber at first, and then they built one, but they actually never used it, and they don't know why. Cause not many, um, Jewish people were here, it was mostly political figures that opposed Nazism.
And that's what makes this concentration camp so famas, famous, is because there was a bunch of political figures there who were fairly famous at the time.
Yeah.
Uh, it was a concentration camp that the, like, if you had, you know, you have world organizations that come in and check to make sure that you're treating your prisoners correctly, et cetera. This was the prison that was modeled for that, or the prison that they would take them to. So it was considered probably one of the better conditioned concentration camps, but still a very, a large number of people did die here as well, so. And they had pictures of the liberation of this, I mean, um, train cars outside of here with, you know, dead bodies on it, et cetera, so. I mean, it's not like people didn't know what was going on around there.
Everybody just turned a blind eye at it? On a better note, we actually also went to BMW. And so these are two of the cars that we saw, there's.
The one on the left is a V-eight, and it's an all-electric car. I only know this because I was kinda obsessed with it when we went, and I was kinda all over.
Our tour guide joked that we should buy him and, as a souvenir for our parents.
As you looked at the price tag on that thing? That was pretty high.
It's probably more expensive to transfer over here than it is to buy it there.
But I think this vehicle itself was probably about a hundred and twenty thousand euro.
Which is about the same.
Twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah.
It's expensive.
And, um, the BMW headquarters is actually modeled after a four-cylinder engine. You can kinda see it from the picture.
That's this piece right here.
Yeah, so you wanna go next? This is a hunting lodge for a king. Yeah, this isn't even the full building, this is as much as I can get in the picture.
It was huge. It was like half of a big square. Alright, and they had a little pond in the middle.
I knew I had more pictures of it, it was just later on.
Yep, so now we're back to the Marienplatz, and there's a little bit better of the Glockenspiel, or that mechanism there of the clock.
Alright. You can go next. And then here's, um, at our connecting flight, I got a window seat, so I was able to get some pictures there. And.
Our plane ride home was actually longer than the plane ride there, cause we had to go against the wind. And it took us, first it was two hours, and then it took us nine hours, so a total of eleven hours just to get home, plus the two hours on the bus ride.
And then the extra thirty minutes just to get, trying to find our connecting flight. Kinda lost Carter, cause he kinda made it his goal to buy a hat in every country. And he's like, "We're in, we're in another country, I'm gonna go buy a hat", but none of us knew he was gonna buy a hat, so he kinda disappeared on us.
And customs was very scary, because there was a bunch of people there asking if you brought anything over, like. If anybody touched our bag, if we had any animals, if we had any, like, food or anything, like, they were very keen on making sure that we didn't have anything that we weren't supposed to have.
Yeah.
Going, going there was not bad.
Getting out was easy, getting back in is hard.
But when we were coming back, it was a lot harder too, because we were also very tired and just ready to go home, so.
We got actually pretty lucky, none of us had a, have our bag searched.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got away without having to get pat down or anything like that.
I actually got pat down.
Did you?
Oh yeah, the, oh yeah, I got patted down too.
I got pat down because I went through a big metal detector thing, and it beeped, because on my pants, I was wearing sweatpants and I had metal zippers. And the lady was like, "Come over here", and so I literally had to stand there, it's the full on this, and they do the whole pat down.
Kinda same for me, I, a girl in front of me, she wasn't with us, she left her glasses on, so I'm like, "Oh, I can keep my glasses on too", cause hers had metal frames too. Hers went off, they let her through, mine went off, I got searched, they had me take off my shoes, and another girl actually had, um, bomb powder tested on her, too. So like, they had a paper swipe and it came clear, but still.
They're very serious about that stuff.
They were serious. I guess, do you guys have any questions? Nolan, do you got a question?
Uh, I have a, I have a few comments.
Alright.
When you went to the BMW headquarters, that car you had was an I-eight, not a V-eight. And when I was in Paris, they still did have the locks on the bridge.
Yeah, they moved it now.
Kind of boarded up.
They just recently moved it out, because it was causing a lot of issues.
And they had it, it's like that in a couple states.
Well, thank you girls for sharing your trip, and we appreciate the board always supporting us to allow our students to take our trips to Germany and Spain and.
Who's yawn?
No yawns.
No yawns in this place?
Okay, um, this is our middle school principal advisory, and we'll go ahead and start with the microphone, and you guys can choose any of the talking points on the middle school side, or if you think of something else, as we're sharing, feel free to bring that up to the board. Why don't you introduce yourself, and then go ahead and pick one, cause some of you guys, I think, might be new to our board, cause our sixth graders are doing this now.
Um, I'm Drew Tangen, and I really like the use of the courtyards, because it's really fun to go out there and get some sun during the school day and have your lunch, and it's just really nice out.
I'm Brooke Schrader, and I also like the courtyards, because it's nice to get some fresh air after being stuck inside all day.
I'm Tanner Stanley, the school climate this year has been, I thought it's been pretty good this year, better than normal. I think like, uh, it's been going very fast. I think, like, the, it's almost the end of the school year, and it seems like last year would just be like halfway through the school year, it's been going so fast.
I'm Kelly Henan, and I thought having speakers at our school was good, and we should have them like every year.
Can you tell, tell them a little bit about maybe Kat Perkins? Cause she was the one that we had this year, or what, something?
She told us to be fearless.
So who's this young lady?
Kat Perkins.
Kat Perkins.
She sung.
Um, I'm Olivia Haynes, and I think the facility upgrades, like the indoor track and field house would be nice, cause we could hold like, big volleyball tournaments and basketball tournaments and stuff like that.
I'm Ryan Master, and I think the weight room improvements would be nice, cause then it would take up a lot less room.
I'm Chase Mansell, and I think that the courtyards are good because, uh, cause we can do something other than throw balls around in the gym.
I'm Grayson Folks, I also like the courtyard, because you can get some fresh air and get in the sun.
I'm Nolan Ekman, and I've really liked, um, I really look forward to going one-to-one next year, also, I really do think the year has gone quite fast.
I'm Eli Nelson, and I think the use of the courthouse, courtyards have been a lot better, and that you can get outside and some.
I'm Spencer Eisenbrot, and I think the use of the courtyard is better, cause you get to go outside and get fresh air.
I'm Claire Campbell, and I like the use of the courtyards, because I like to go outside every once in a while during the school day, so.
I'm Courtney Schmidt, I like the use of the courtyard also, because it gets a chance of being outside and, um, getting fresh air instead of just playing inside.
I'm Vanessa Anderson, and I like the idea of having like a track and field house, cause then you could use it for like, three sports, like basketball, volleyball, and track, and not just for one. Then you could maybe go out there for gym, or if it's too rainy, you could run the track inside instead of outdoors.
I'm Kennedy Mansell, and I like, um, I think the school climate this year has been really good, um, from past years, and I also like the courtyard idea.
Any questions or things from the school board, or any other stories about what you guys have been doing in your classrooms?
How was the dance?
Dance was fun.
Was it?
Yeah.
What was your theme?
Old Hollywood.
Old Hollywood?
Yep.
Who'd you dress up as?
Myself.
You're not old Hollywood though.
I look good.
You look good, there you go.
Uh, I had suspenders and a bowtie.
We should ask the girls if you look good, right?
What is some of, have you guys, anybody willing to share if you guys have used or done some different things with the Chromebooks, or doing technology or Google Classroom? done some different things with the Chromebooks, or doing technology or Google Classroom?
I'm kind of excited for like the Chromebooks, because in like history, we've been doing more products like making commercials, kind of, and then we present them to the class, and we could use like the Chromebooks or the iPads, and I think that like kind of technology would be kind of good.
Anybody else want to share?
Right now, we're doing some papers for two different classes, some big papers, and like Chromebooks are always checked out, like, if you don't check them out beforehand, you're not gonna get them, so it'd be really nice to just always have a Chromebook on your hand.
Other questions?
I have a question. As we discussed this all earlier, Mr. Maher gave us a wonderful demonstration of the new security cameras and everything that are up around the school. Are you all aware of the fact that when you're off the hallways, you're always on the camera? And do you think that makes a difference in the way that kids are acting outside the
Well, let's do what's the first, the first question. Do you guys realize that most of the building is on camera?
Nope.
Okay.
I don't like knowing some of it, like, you know you're being watched, but you don't know this is the building, so, yeah.
You don't feel it's intrusive? Do you think it occurs here, the hate here, of how you are in the hallway, or do you kind of forget about it?
Some people do. Some people change this. They'll do something, and they're like, "Oh, yeah, she should have done that."
I assume I, you'll learn, right? Don't mess around the hallways.
Does anybody like the courtrooms?
The courtyards?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
I think we need more tables.
Oh, yeah.
The lunches have been an ongoing subject we've spoken about. I think lunches are going to...
I think they've gotten better.
Really? Yeah. They have too much chicken. They always have like chicken or meat, like, someday. Oh, you have that. They always have chicken.
But, yeah, we do have more chicken than others. Okay? Any other thoughts, you guys? How many of you were in the choir? Your choir concert is next week, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Vanessa?
I know it's like...
Okay, I was gonna say, it was a high school concert, it was last night. Any of you guys help with the fifth grade tour? Couple of you did. We had the fifth grade tour that came through, yeah, last Friday, I think it was, or Thursday? Our fifth graders, was it Friday? Our fifth graders came over, ate lunch with our sixth grade students, and then toured the building and talked with our teachers and things, so.
You need to watch track and field?
Track and field is next week, Friday.
Here you go.
Sixth grade, some of you will be helping. Oh, you mean elementary track and field? Yes, yes. I'll be getting in touch with you next week. Okay? I think that's all we have.
All right. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, you guys.
So are we?
Yeah. I'm kidding.
Well, at least they liked the courtyard.
That's what I was going to say.
I don't like the courtyard.
We have to get some more places for them to play, other things in there.
More benches or tables, yeah.
Am aware.
We're told that.
Were you told that?
The kids didn't know that Max and I have already asked Bob to consider getting...
We've already discussed that topic.
Some multi-purpose tables, like the white tables, we don't use in more than one variation for out there. So we're, we're talking about that. And then if we had enough, we could even start checking it out. Max and I were talking, I bet we'd have teachers check it out for, say, reading group time or class, actual classes out there, like the original intent, I think, when the building was set up that way. So we're, we're looking forward to it as it grows and expands. Bob, if you could link to that article. I know the board has seen the article. We did have Spark from St. Cloud come down, and they did a really nice article. We're one of the few programs right now in Minnesota that have both the biomedical systems and the human body systems program through the Project Lead the Way program, and we're going in our third year, and then now, so it was really nice to be highlighted in the Spark. So that's up there, and it is connected and now linked on our school webpage for anybody in Painesville to see and link to. So just a little bit there. Lots of things going on the end of the year. Every day brings something else. We did finish up with our MCA testing this week. Overall, we're real happy with the growth that we saw with our students, and you'll get more information as those scores are, are set up. But our teachers looked at growth ranges of students, and we're very happy with how things came about, so we'll be getting more information there. Students really liked taking the test on the Chromebook in their normal classroom. Overall, I think they just felt more comfortable, you know, "This is my setting, this is my teacher," and just the testing atmosphere was much better this year. So looking forward to that as it kind of, it always takes time to get all those figures all processed. We did have the Jazz Band Festival here. We had four different bands come and perform, and then instructor, the jazz instructor and instrumental band instructor from down at the U of M that Mr. Knowlton actually took classes from, came up and was our judge, and worked with all the different bands that performed. And it was a really nice day for our school, as well as New London came, and some of the other schools, ACGC sent bands up, so it was really nice. We had prom, that was always a big event, very fun for the students, and seventh and eighth grade dress-up dance. We have students going to the Festival of Nations, had our choir concert last night, the end-of-the-year concert, went over very well, and the students received many different awards. We are taking a group of about forty students to Rotochopper on Thursday for a tour of their facility. And at our Project Lead the Way CTE meeting, we do have a demonstration coming down to show some things on, on a virtual level of welding, as well as doing medical procedures and things. It's, it's kind of the new way to help kids practice the skills. So if you can't have thirty welders in a room, you could have five welders and then some of the other kids working with this virtual program, so kids have more time with that practice. So we're gonna have that demonstrated at that Project Lead the Way CTE meeting, so I'm excited to see that. Might be a way to look at enhancing our curriculum as we, if we move forward with, like, a facilities project in some of, because they, they have a medical program, they have a welding, they have electrical and mechanical. You can actually take apart an engine in virtual space, and it, you want to be able to do both, but it allows more kids to do more things.
So are we having some, some of the community members come and watch this, too?
Yeah, Bruce is on that committee. We have, I think, probably ten businessmen, I think, from the, from the community on there. Jamie and Angie Brick are on there. Lance Lewis is on there, so we have some different people from around. So I'm curious to see their input as we have this presentation done. It's the first time I've seen it, saw it at a principal's meeting, and thought this might be something good to look at. It's not cheap, but it might be a really good way to help students get some real experience in that. So excited about that. Moving into the end of the year and winding up with grades and graduation and all the festivities that come with that, so. And you kind of heard the rest of the year here in a nutshell. Any questions you have for me?
No.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so let's move on to personnel, I believe is our next topic. So number one, review and consider approval of medical leave for Maria Rassason from May 5th, 2017 through the end of the school year of 2016, '17.
It's just what it says.
And motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of hiring Lori Neppson as the head coach, or head coach, head cook for the summer food program effective June 5th, 2017 through August 30th, 2017.
Two and three are for that food program that we're starting up.
This is that new program.
It is, correct.
Tomo. I got a motion from Lou and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval to hire Katie Welly as a kitchen helper for the summer food program effective June 5th, 2017 through the August 30th, 2017.
I move.
Got a motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider resignation of Rita Gardine, her paraprofessional, effective at the end of the 2016, '17 school year.
We certainly want to thank Rita for all, for her time in the, in the district. I think she's been in, I know it's over twenty years, I think it's twenty-six, because of my...
Twenty-six?
Twenty-six years. So we, we thank her for all her service to our students and district.
I move.
Got a motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of hiring Dan Elliott, a van driver, for two hours per day from May 10th, 2017 to the end of the 2016, '17 school year.
Yeah, this is a little bit unusual. This is not a special ed situation. It's a situation where one of our students has moved from foster caring with her grandma, and the grandma lives in Wilmer. And I feel strongly in that we need to do the right thing here, which is continue at least to transport, transport her to Painesville for the rest of this year. So we've set that up, and I would really recommend that we approve this one, even though there is some cost to the district.
Kind of against this.
What, pardon me?
Kind of against this one. He's my sub. In fact, right now, he's...
Okay, you made me panic there for a minute, Lou.
So I guess I'll have to work the rest here.
Yeah, it's, it, it's one of those things that it just came up, and, and I'm sorry about that, Lou, but...
Yeah, I bet you are.
He was gracious enough to do this very quickly for us, and we appreciate it.
He doesn't want to work for Lou anymore. So move. There you go. I got a motion from Lou and a second from Cheryl. Any other further discussions? Hearing all, hearing... Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried.
Just before you start number six, all of the rest of these, originally, we're gonna put this on the next agenda, but because I needed to put the van driver on this agenda, I thought I might as well finish those, these off. These all deal with the PAWS summer program, so.
So number six is review and consider approval of hiring Jacqueline Gruber as a PAWS program assistant for up to an average of forty hours per week effective June 1st to August 30th, 2017.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion from Cheryl and a second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of hiring Valerie Miller as a PAWS program assistant for up to an average of twenty hours per week effective June 1st, August, through August 30th, 2017.
Tomo.
Motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of hiring Sue Teicher, PAWS program assistant for up to an average of thirty hours per week effective June 1st through August 30th, 2017.
So move.
Got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Bruce. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of hiring Wanda Hazi, PAWS program assistant for up to an average of thirty hours per week effective June 1st through August 30th, 2017.
Tomo.
Got a motion from Lou.
Second.
Second from Randy. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of hiring Jacqueline Guglen as a PAWS program assistant for up to an average of forty hours per week effective June 1st through August 30th, 2017.
So move.
Got a motion from Rick.
Second.
Second from Cheryl. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of hiring Jeannie Haas, Haas as a PAWS program assistant for up to an average of twenty hours per week effective June 1st through August 30th, 2017.
So move.
Got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Rick. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Review and consider approval of hiring Holly Kern as a PAWS program assistant for up to an average of twenty-five hours per week effective June 1st through August 30th, 2017.
I'll abstain from this vote.
Okay, we have Randy from abstaining from this here vote.
So move.
Got a motion from Cheryl.
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any other further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and carried. Informational reports. We did have Lori's ready. Dave is not here, and we'll go to Matt Dickhausen.
All right, thank you for approving all of our summer PAWS workers. Couple of things. A report on the auditorium. We have the Wilmer Symphony here with Jared highlighting that. We got a lot of comments from those that performed the, in the symphony. They said they loved the auditorium, they loved the acoustics and the sound, and they could hear themselves there. We had a pretty good turnout, so that was good. We did just install four new additional speakers in the auditorium to, we had a few dead spots in there, and the Arts Council did pay for that project from our talent showcases and from our funds there. Also in front of you then is our summer brochure, all kinds of new programs and activities. If you look through there and have any questions or comments, just let me know, so. Any questions for me? Okay. Thank you very much.
All right.
I reported at length a couple of weeks ago about a lot of things going on. It rained a lot since then, so that's what I've been doing, rescheduling events and things like that. This is really the last, put your nose to the grindstone and get things done for the spring in two weeks. The regular seasons are pretty much done for everything, so it's just crazy busy. And that's what I do all day long. So, but one thing that I do during the day is the lunchroom supervision, and the kids weren't kidding when, they do go out there and utilize the courtyard, so we've been trying to gather, with the exception of these tables, we've kind of gathered all of the, I guess, maintenance-free, if you want to call them, tables and chairs that will be able to take the weather and put them out there and they get used, so I'm looking forward to those upgrades. But, and then report on the camera system, I don't know if you had, had time to think about it, if you have any other additional questions, or you can send me an email and stuff on it. On purpose, I didn't really go through and show you all the dead spaces, because... Um, on purpose, I didn't really go through and show you all the dead spaces because you really want everybody to know what nook and cranny isn't covered by the camera, so... But there, but there are some that we wanna address. I mean, in general, we have fantastic coverage, but there are some things that we'd like to address within that, so. I don't know if anybody has any questions for me?
Nope, go down.
Thank you.
Yep. Buildings and grounds report, Donnie Mayer.
I've just got a couple of things. Uh, we had a pre-bid meeting for the elementary school windows last week. Uh, we had three asbestos contractors show up. No construction contractors, but it wasn't a mandatory meeting. But, talking to Evan, he figures there will be two construction bids out there. And actually, we have a bid opening this Thursday for the windows, so, at three o'clock. And we're hoping to get some bids on it and that they're not over.
When you say asbestos people coming out, are you anticipating that there is asbestos in those?
There is asbestos. We've already done that testing.
Oh, okay.
We had the window caulking and there's a, like a trans from above the windows that has asbestos in it.
Okay.
And also, we had radon testing done. We got the results back. Um, on a hundred and thirty detectors, we had all in classrooms, in locker rooms, and we came up with four that were way out of line. So, I called the company and wondered why, because they were in between rooms that were great, you know? And they said it's probably bad detectors, so that we got four new detectors hanging now. But we are well within, under the range of, uh, what do they call it? Pic, Picoree Curies? It's a unit of measure, measurement for radioactive concentrations. And four is, what do I wanna say, is the level we wanna be at or below. And we're all, most of them are either two or one or below that.
How long do you leave these set?
Uh, ninety days.
Ninety days, okay.
Next, the ones we have sitting now are ten-day, just to see if, what possibly could've went wrong. They're not sure if they had bad ones or what happened, so. Other than that? Have any questions?
How many of those windows that you're, you're bidding, whether, I don't know that I ever saw what they actually decided on.
The windows themselves.
Are you just replacing the whole window or even a fill-in?
Yeah, we're...
And put other windows in them?
It will be a steel, what do I say, stud frame. Inside will be sheet rock. There'll be, uh, I'm not sure how much insulation they had inside, but then it'll be a steel outside.
So, how much of its window and how much of its material?
Uh, there'll be two windows per room now, which'll give them about what they have.
So, when you say that, is that from the, the size of them all the way up?
No, they'll, they'll only be, uh, four foot wide by, four foot by, six foot, six foot by four foot.
Yeah, most of it will just be sealed in, other than the windows. There won't be any other glass. Much, much like it is right now, really, for what they have as far as sunlight in, in space for air to come in. There won't be a lot of change.
Yeah, the teachers will actually, now, they gotta cut down to look out the windows. There'll be a higher, where they can walk up to the windows and look out.
Now, do we go with a slider then?
They will be sliders, because we didn't want them flipping out because kids running by or whatever would hit their head or...
And we did talk a little bit about, you know, not having them be able to open up at all, but we would like to be able to get the pressure.
Bob Hewitt.
Uh, just a few things. Um, we're looking at May 24th at 6:00 PM for the, uh, next facility meeting at the elementary school, um, media center. So, we're looking at that. I'll send out an email tomorrow to the Facilities Committee for that. Uh, we need to pay off our special assessments, I thought I'd be able to do over time, but we can't, so there's going to be out of my reserve fund for capital, the assessments that we had for the elementary school, we need to get those paid off, so that's gonna be twelve thousand dollars. That wasn't in the five-year plan, but it's gonna come out of this budget this year, so it'll just come out of, out of our reserve fund. So, just be aware of that. Uh, also looking at purchasing the tables. Um, you'll, you've heard it mentioned quite a bit, um, not that there's any pressure that has bore on me for this, but out of our reserve fund also, I'm gonna recommend to the board that we take out one thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents. That's for four new tables and the chairs that would go around them. We think that that would be enough for what we see going out into the courtyard right now. So, unless you have any issues, I'm going to give Max permission to go on Amazon tomorrow and order them and have them within two days.
What kind of chairs are they?
They're, they're plastic table, or plastic chairs and tables.
Similar to what Rachel said, huh? I got the good one.
Yeah, you have one of them.
Yeah.
How did you get that?
You wanna sit on it?
No.
Well, well, we're looking at, we'll be able to use these tables for other things. They're lightweight, so they're easy for, for us to move them around and really, they're set up so that they will have the least wear for the fact that they might be in rain or whatever, so.
During the spring and fall, bringing in, and the kids have already agreed that they would bring them in every Wednesday after lunch, so they can hole in, the managers don't have to...
So, unless I get some issues from the board here, um, we're gonna order them tomorrow.
Tables and chairs would be better than picnic tables?
Um, we tried to get a picnic table through the door, but evidently Max didn't run hard enough with it, because it wouldn't fit.
Well, we were gonna take one of the, the kids go outside, so I thought, let's just push one of the cafeteria tables, 'cause it's empty, right? Kids be outside. When it folds up, the stools or the chairs that are on it doesn't fit through the door. Just thought, these tables, we can use them if we have outdoor events or indoor events or anything else and we need them. We had the community meeting in the cafeteria, we could've just slipped these tables in for anything. Um, Donnie, sometimes people request the old lunchroom tables. These would work fine, they're lightweight, they're mean.
And the picnic tables can be hard to move and to use them for anything else, so we think this will serve our purpose better.
Thank you.
So, I'm not seeing any issues. Max ordered them.
He's down and saved.
Yep. Um, as Donnie had mentioned, we have the opening bids for the elementary window project coming up on Thursday. Uh, police liaison officer, I wanna bounce this off you. There has been discussed, some discussion between, uh, our school district and the BBE school district and the, the city with the police. Uh, we would like to at least, um, and I'm just bringing this to your mind to think about a little bit, right now, we pay the city ten thousand dollars. But, that's to get as much time as we can for our police liaison officers, but at the same time, it's only ten thousand dollars that our police liaison officers are pulled away, whenever they need to be pulled away. And if they're shorthanded, we usually end up taking the, the brunt of that. So, I'm gonna meet with Paul, um, on Thursday, we're gonna talk a little bit about that, but if we increased our budget to twenty-five thousand and BBE was willing to do the same thing, then we would hire our own police officer. The cities, I think, would, would throw in a little bit also for that. But then we would have our own police officer that would work between us and BBE. We'd get the police officer half the time, they would get the police officer half the time, but there would not be the ability then for the police to pull out our officer when something comes up. This would be our person that we're supporting. So, I'm going to recommend to the board that if that is an option and BBE does that, that we do increase that. I think that we get extreme benefits to having a police officer in our hallways. Certainly, we're going to put some job descriptions and some things in place that if we're paying for this, that this, this is what the officer's gonna do every day. And it's not going to be, you know, do other paperwork for other piece. It's going to be roaming the halls, presenting to students and those types of things. Um, it's not coming to the board right now, but think about it, because chances are, it will be built, if BBE does this and agrees to it, it'll probably be built in my budget. I'll bring that to the board when we talk about next year's budget and, but do think about it, if you have any questions, or if you want, uh, Chief Wagner to come in and talk about this a little bit, I'd be more than happy to bring him in. But I do think that it's worth it if we can work it into our budget, that we look at doing that. I think, again, there's extreme benefits for us having a police liaison officer in, in our buildings. Any questions you have for me on that piece?
Just that, not a question, I...
Sure.
I don't think you need to bring Paul in, but I think it'd be very interesting to see exactly how we would be using that twenty hours per week or whatever we had here. I'd be very interested, I think that's gonna be fantastic, but I think it'd be...
I do have this spreadsheet that they've been hoping, that they've been keeping this year, that shows like, what they're in the building and what they're doing by just general category. I could share that with you.
I'd be interested to see that.
Yeah. But it would be also nice to know what else we can do. I mean, those are some of the things that we do, but if we're actually gonna hire somebody for our time, it'd be nice to have something to put together of what is it that they're gonna do.
If we're gonna be spending twenty-five thousand dollars, we're going to wanna get the best bang for the buck for the district.
Right.
So, who would actually be the employer?
Um, I think the city would still be the employer.
So, they would take care of the benefits?
Yes. Yep. If, this is a straight twenty-five thousand dollar piece that we would give the city, just like the ten thousand is right now. There's no additional benefits that get attached to that ten thousand. It's just a lump sum, um, dollar amount. And like I said, it, we wouldn't be able to do this without the support of the city, 'cause they are also contributing things, such as benefits and those types of things to this piece if we do it.
I think too, that the public would wanna know why, and it's not just because there's trouble in the school, but that there are other things that this person is doing and so that we're able to explain that.
In the rapport that our police officers are able to build with our, our students and head things off before a lot of times they happen, or if it's an investigation, find out more things, 'cause trust has been established and built, been built. Alright? Okay, and like I said, I'll keep the board informed about that. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that we're looking at this and this is a possibility that it might be built in the budget. Um, we're currently working on liability insurance bids. Riverport, who we were with, has pulled out of the school insurance market. I cannot tell you what kind of adventure this is. I swear, they're gonna make me count every block that's in every building we have and report it to them. It is the, I'm sorry, it is the craziest thing I've ever had to do. The things that they want, that make absolutely no sense to me, has just amazed me. But, we're, um, we're gonna push through this, we do need to have insurance. Um, so, we're looking at a couple of local companies to, to bid, a couple of things that they have, and then another company that's outside to bid the rest. So, that's all being done in the background, but it is an adventure. Um, then the only other thing would be is that we continue to work on the budget as we work into next year, any adjustments for this year, and, um, then the budget for next year. Any questions the board has? Okay, that's what I got.
Alright, any other board sharing?